It is Thursday, February 14th, 2019. This is the Olentangie Schools Board of Education. I'll call the meeting to order. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartz?
Here.
Mrs. Feesel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge, stand in, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved. I will second.
Ms. Hatfield?
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, we have our first presentation item is the Tyler Run Rumble Jump Rope Team. Please come up.
Yay!
Well, hello, good evening. Say hello to Mr. Rafe.
Yeah, they're good.
Hello to the board.
Hi.
Thank you. We wanted to, brought some rumblers with me today, part of our after-school physical activity that we do over at Tyler Run. So I wanted to share some of the things that we do over at Tyler Run to kinda encourage the kids to stay healthy and be well. So the rumblers came along with me, and actually, some of them were members of Run Club as well in the past, too. So that's one of the things that I was gonna present with you. And then, if you don't mind, they were gonna maybe do some tricks for you if you don't mind seeing some tricks afterwards.
Okay.
Oh, we gotta see. Why?
So, one of the things that I wanted to present to you were just a couple of things that we do over at Tyler Run. And, I don't know if it's now going forward for them. Thanks, Dustin. And, one of the first things that I wanted to share with you was Run Club as a kinda after-school program that I started with some parents that wanted to get their kids active and doing some other activities after school. So, I think it was 2012 when I first did our first Run Club over at Tyler Run. And since then, we've kinda been doing it with 3rd through 5th grade. And we do our own 5K now. When we first did it, I did, encouraged them to do a 5K that was in the community somewhere. And our first one was the Snowflake Run. So it was quite a cold run in Dublin that we ran around. These are just some pictures from the 5K that we do at our school. They just kinda run around our own little path that we've, I kinda marked out for them. So, almost, almost a kilometer around our school grounds, so it works out kinda nicely. So, I just kinda give them a little encouragement and certificate at the end of the, of their run and things. Another physical activity that we've kinda, because we've got some other Run Clubs started as well throughout the district, so they've come together and at the, and last spring, we did a full run with all the Olentangie Run Clubs. Anybody that wanted to come, kinda did a mile run. So, that was over at Liberty Park, and I'm hoping to be able to do that again. Still waiting to hear back from them on that one. But, another physical activity we do at Tyler Run that I started was our jump rope team with the rumblers. We've done jump rope for heart since 2008, 2009 year with that one. And so I had, had some girls that were interested in just jumping at recess time. And so, I had them kinda put together with me like routines and videoed them. And we kinda made that our end of the wrap-up of our jump rope for heart. So that kinda was the beginnings of our jump rope team. From there, then, we just, I started to kinda get a little bit more and a little bit more each time. Now we're 4th and 5th graders, and we've got 34 jumpers this, this year. So, it's quite a full gymnasium once they're all in there. There's our first group of girls that kinda, and this was all during like recess time, that they just worked on routines and double dutch and jump rope, all sorts of fun things for that. So, but our rumblers, they always perform for our jump rope for our kickoff assemblies and then our, our wrap-up. They do their own individual routines where they can kinda make up their own thing. We have a rumble routine that's kind of our kickoff routine, and in that, they have some small groups that do. This year, we, we expanded over to doing Veterans Day Assembly. Some of the girls volunteered to do that, and Maggie, one of our jumpers here tonight, actually performed in that. And I had just a little clip, if you don't mind. You can kinda see some of their, some of their tricks. So, so that was, that was a pretty big hit. We did it in front of the school, and we had veterans that were there for the day, too. So it was kind of a nice tribute to do for those veterans that we were honoring for the day. And then, we also do like a walking school bus since we're a community that has a lot of sidewalks and a lot of subdivisions right in that area. It's really nice to be able to encourage the kids to walk to school. So we do the walk to school day in the fall, and then bike to school day in the spring. And then I also do kind of some walking school buses. That's another kind of thing that you can encourage them to continue walking. We have a lot of kids that walk from the same area, so they can kinda meet up and then walk from that one house that they can kinda meet at. And in the spring, I'll start to do some more walking school buses where we'll meet at a house in one community and then invite people to come over and walk to school. And then for bike to school, last year, I didn't get a chance to do this, but I got the signs ready for this year so we can have kinda some bike stops where they can kinda meet at this time on that bike to school day and kinda all ride in together, kind of a thing, just to keep it safe as they're walking and biking into school, too. So, we have safety patrols for our intersection, but there's a lot of other intersections. It's nice to have that big group who's gonna work together across the road instead of by themselves. We actually had the mayor from Powell join us for one of our walk to school days and walking school bus for the past couple of years, too. So, those were just some of our after-school physical activities that we do in Tyler Run and encourage the kids there. So I just wanted to share with you, board members, some of the things that's happening at Tyler Run. And then our jumpers was Maria Weekly and Avery Mast and Maggie Waterstreet that came along tonight. If you would like to see some of their tricks if they feel like.
Yes, of course.
Yeah. Go for it, girls, the floor is yours. I also have some ropes if anybody else wanted.
Oh, no.
Randy?
I brought a bunch of them. Size ones for adults, too.
Not everybody wants, not everybody wants, let out.
I'm not letting somebody say that phrase, that's gotta be jelly.
You wanna put it on the ground, I'll step over.
Yeah, I could walk over it, yeah.
There you go. What? Yeah.
Don't leave the podium behind you.
Yeah, you can scoot up.
Come up closer.
You can scoot up.
There you go.
There you go.
Don't hurt us.
Thank you.
You got it, Randy, you got it.
Who makes up the routines?
I only make up the first part of the rumble routine. That's their tryout. And that's kinda the tryout that they do for me. And it's tryouts, I say tryouts, but it's stick with it, if they don't beat it, then keep going back. You do it for several weeks, and by the end of the time, they've all got it. But I do that first part for them, so they've got that. And then we kinda, after we've done that, they break out into little groups, kind of little mini groups, and then they kinda work together. So a little cooperation and figure out what tricks. So they do some tricks and that's, and then in the wrap-up assembly, they'll do their own group tricks. So, I'll put them into groups and then they'll figure out their routines. If they're own groups, kinda pick a good song, show you how it gets on, and then.
Yeah, it's hard. Hard no music. I've been to the Jump Rope for Heart assemblies that the Heart Heroes do, and they do a phenomenal job. They come and, you can tell, they get real competitive because they get real creative. And Tyler Run raised so much money last year. We had a challenge that if they raised a certain amount of money and met the challenge goal, that I got the pleasure of going over there and be subjected to being silly stringed. Got covered in silly string.
Where's that picture?
I was, I was a real appreciator of that.
On that picture. Should've brought it.
Yeah, thank you.
Do they do double dutch? Were they?
Some of them do double dutch. I think mostly, just to show ropes is the main thing, 'cause I'm putting the long rope to their routines and things. That first group of girls we saw in that one video, those were like two, three groups, just double dutch. That was all they did in recess, was just working on double dutch and stuff. So, that was a trick, it was a little bit harder, but it's kinda, those that really like it, they'll just keep going at it.
Are you aware?
Every once in a while, we do double dutch.
Sorry. Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's, I was just gonna say, every once in a while, we get some double dutchers who just love to do that, and that's what they wanna do. But, for the most part, I think the short ropes are, everybody's likes doing the different tricks with that, like the layover that was in that one, that's a big one. They start showing that to their classmates, they're like, wow!
Yeah.
Are you familiar with the Ohio State CoEd? I don't know what they officially call themselves, but their rope team?
Yeah, yeah. They've really expanded jump roping, and they've got like a lot of teams now.
Oh, my gosh.
And the jump roping, it's American Jump Rope Association, where they have competitions and things. And Arrow Dublin does a jump rope competition and stuff. We're not to that level of doing that. But that's something eventually.
But it'd be, it'd be an excellent field trip, I think, to.
Yeah.
To watch some of those students.
Does anyone wear a Fitbit?
To see how many? Oh, yeah. Do you get a lot of jumps in?
I bet you burn a lot of calories when you do that at lunch.
So how much are you guys jumping at home? A lot?
Every day? Parents probably.
Parents saying, go outside, get out, go jump in the garage, right?
Appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
For the time to do that, Mr. Perfect.
Yes, great job. Thanks for coming.
Good job, ladies.
Alright, thank you. Okay, the next presentation item is Clearing the Fog. Eric Wells and the Deca Team from OHS. I did see you guys on, it was either Channel 10?
Yes, they're getting all the press.
Fox 28, it was well done.
Their own show.
I just wanna first say thank you to the board for taking the time to listen to this group and their presentation of what they've done. Over the course of their senior year, they have been working on researching, studying, and seeing the student use of vape products, e-cigarettes, Juul's in the high school setting. A lot of the information that they have is from our school at OHS. But if they were to take a look at the district-wide or just national rankings, you're gonna see a lot of similarities above where this, where this trend is getting to with the, with the usage, not just in schools, but in everyday use with teenagers. With this group to take on this project and this topic, it hasn't been the easiest for them. Anytime you're trying to go against the grain in a teenage setting in any high school and trying to point out different things that should change and trying to get policy change, it's not the easiest thing. This group has been rock stars. They've been on a ton of different newscasts. They had another meeting today, so they'll be on the news here again. They've been in papers, trying to get their message out to you. And that's part of their presentation today is to take a look at some of our policies within the district and see what can we change? What can we do to hold our students to a higher standard? And how can we try to break this trend with nicotine usage through teenage students? So, at this time, I'd like to introduce.
I'm Maggie Powers.
I'm Joanna Water.
I'm Samantha Billy.
I'm Josh Griner.
And I'll turn it over to them. Thank you.
So we just wanna start by saying good evening and thank you for your time. So this is a topic that we picked to, or we recognized in our own school as something that needed to be addressed. And so we've put together this project, and we made a campaign of education and just informing people in our school and in the community about the dangers of vaping and what they can do to fix this growing problem.
Like Joey said, one of our main goals with this project is to educate the students and parents on the dangers of vaping. Throughout our campaign, we've noticed a lack of this education that's caused so many misconceptions that come along with the use of e-cigarettes.
Going along with that, we, all these kids, they think vaping is just harmless. In the news, it's always like vaping is a harmless substitute for cigarettes. And with this lack of education, they think they can just go and hit their Juul every day, and it's no consequences.
So when we're looking at this, we're currently working to include vaping into current smoking laws. So something we've been pushing for is tobacco to 21, and that's increasing the legal age to 21. And we've been trying to do that in Delaware County. We've met with Representative Rick Carfagna, and he's reaching out to current contacts. And we're going to be talking to townships to see what we can do. Because when we have the age of 18, it gives it, it makes it accessible to seniors in high school. And they're able to buy these products, and they're able to give them to younger students. So we've seen younger cases as early as 5th grade in the district.
So you're probably wondering right now why there's a toilet seat on the slideshow. But, so this is a picture we took today of the Olentangie bathrooms. Just because we thought it really showcased the relevancy of this issue, how it is an everyday occurrence at Olentangie, and we imagine Olentangie Liberty and Olentangie Orange and Olentangie Brulee.
So somebody put that in there?
Yes.
Yeah. We went to the bathroom, and we're told, oh, don't go into that stall. Someone left their Juul stuff in there. And they didn't know who we were, and we're like, oh, that's perfect. Let's get a picture of that.
And for those who can't see, that's a empty box of Juul pods.
I thought maybe they saw your, your campaign and decided to quit. Took immediate.
There are signs in that bathroom.
Yeah, so just a quick overview of what we're gonna be talking about. We're gonna be talking about the growth of e-cigarette companies, Juul being the biggest one. They, I think, three years ago, they had like 5% of the e-cigarette market, whereas now they have somewhat around 85%. And part of that is because of how they target teenagers with their ads and their flavors and their design.
Now, they're, they're under investigation from several attorney generals, correct? For their highest market.
Predatory.
So we also noticed a growing amount of students vaping. We saw this constantly around campus, whether that was in the bathroom and parking lots, at sporting events. Just anytime that students could, we saw them doing it. And so we really noticed that, okay, this is something that we need to take a stand against because students are doing this not knowing what it's doing to their body. Additionally, we started seeing it trickle down, starting with like the older students and going all the way down into the middle schools and even elementary schools now. And so that's really a driving point behind our campaign.
So with the social media use, we've seen that multiple companies are targeting the youth by showing their ads with younger, healthy users, and that's not the case. It's damaging their bodies, and kind of perceiving this in this way makes it look as a positive, cool thing to do. And we see that most of these ads are on social media that we use. So they'll be on Instagram, they'll be on Snapchat, they'll be on Twitter, everything that they know that teens are using. And this is the same thing we've seen in the past with cigarette companies and how they targeted youth. And so, when we see this, it's more accessible for students to be able to buy these products and sell them in and outside of school. And we just see this as a growing problem.
So with this, we are trying to get some of our own policies and procedures changed within the Olentangie local school district. And we believe that if some of these changes are made, we'll be able to positively impact this nicotine addiction that we see today.
With the current growth of e-cigarette companies, Juul has been the largest. So in the past year, the sales have increased 600%. And most of these sales are going to users between the ages of 15 and 24. And so, seven out of 10 of these teenagers are exposed to e-cigarette advertising, like I said before, on Instagram, Snapchat, Twitter. And so when teenagers are seeing this, it's more accessible to them. They're able to go online or see this throughout the school. When teens are showing that, they're posting videos or pictures. They're putting ads themselves on their Snapchat saying, I'm selling this if anyone wants to buy it. And so we've also seen an increase in the e-liquid flavors. So that's making it more appealing to teens when there's fruity flavors or flavors like bubble gum, cotton candy, strawberry. And that's a big thing, they're appealing to teens, and that's something the FDA has been cracking down on with Juul. They're trying to eliminate the sale of fruit, creme brulee, and mango, some of their top sellers.
We've also noticed that there has been a 77% increase in e-cigarette usage amongst students in the past 12 months. So this has really taken off in the past year. Like, it used to be, I believe Mr. Griffiths, our principal, said he would catch people like every, like, week or something, but now it's like every couple of days. So this problem has really amped up within this past year. And then teen, teens are 16 times more likely to use Juul in the ages, like, from the teenage ages compared to those who are in like college.
So we, as part of our primary research for this project, we surveyed 277 students from Olentangie High School. And these students were randomly, we had sent out the link to our survey, and they elected to take it themselves. So this survey reported that 53% of the students surveyed had tried vaping at least once. And of those, of all the students, 32% currently vape, meaning they vape weekly, daily, every weekend habitually they vape.
And with those 53% of students that have tried vaping, an important thing to note about that is that the national average of students that have tried vaping is currently 28%. That puts Olentangie significantly higher above that national average. And so we believe that we need to crack down on this issue. Additionally, we surveyed, when we surveyed these students, we asked them how likely they are to encounter a student vaping on campus. And 56, students, students said that 56% of the time, they're to encounter someone vaping at school. Whether that be in the bathroom, the football games, or the parking lot, or even in classrooms now, students are using their vaping devices because they need their, like, fix of nicotine, basically, and they're just blowing it into their jackets or their backpacks, things like that. And we really wanna make, put an end to this. Additionally, we asked students on a scale of 1 to 10, how big of an issue is the nicotine addiction in our high school? We were able to filter these results to see what current users answered compared to the total responses. And current users actually ranked this issue as an 8.3 out of 10 compared to the total responses, which on, which was an average of 7.3. So we're able to see that the current users actually rank this as a higher issue than our non-users do in the high school.
Can I ask just a question about some of your stats? Maybe I don't wanna get ahead of your presentation, but did you do in your survey any questions about where students are getting these products? How they attain these, how they obtain these products?
So, in our survey, we did not ask that question, but we hosted an anonymous student focus group with select, with students that were, like, they volunteered to come. We had a variety of students that don't vape, students that do vape. They ranged in all four age grades, age gr, or all four grades and different like age groups and genders. And our number one response was that they're buying it from other students or they're getting it from older people outside of the high school, or they're just borrowing their friends, or in some cases, even parents are buying it for them as well.
Thank you.
And then, while we're asking questions, any thoughts on why we index two times the national average?
So, what we, our main thought behind this is that since Delaware County and Olentangie local school districts is a relatively affluent area, it's easier for students to get their hands on these kinds of things.
So, again, with the selling, social media has made a huge impact on this problem in our schools. First of all, students are shown advertisements on social media, on Instagram, on Twitter. It promotes like all the flavors and all like, it just promotes this image of e-cigarettes being cool and trendy. And there's also been radio advertisements on public stations advertising how Juul is cool and how it will help you and how it's great for you.
Additionally, we see social media causing a normalization of the usage of these products. The biggest trend among high schoolers is Finsta, which is your fake Instagram or what you don't want your parents to see, what you don't want your name linked to, all the things that you're doing behind closed doors, things like that. And we see the usage of e-cigarette devices on this all the time. And so these are actually pictures that we polled from students from all three, all four high schools, actually. There will be another one later in the presentation of students either like decorating their Juul so that they can separate them among their friends or selling these devices to other people. And so it really causes a normalization of like, this is like our generation, but it doesn't have to be like that.
And if you see the one on the top right, that's actually a, well, that's not definitely, but there are a lot, there are lots of vaping devices that contain THC oil. And a lot of students are using these devices illegally.
And so additionally, we see the in-school selling. We see this way more frequently than we have in the past. This is actually a photo that we were able to obtain from a student at Olentangie High School. And those are, that's not just your regular vapor that actually has THC, THC oil in it. So we're seeing this all over, and students are using their social media platforms to sell these to younger students. They also use social media to meet up with students during like class periods in between so that if they don't have their own vaping device, but they wanna hit, wanna take a hit, that they can meet up and use these sort of things together in schools.
So our current tobacco policy, this is from the Delaware General Health District. We spoke to Abby Trimble, and she's the head of the Tobacco Free Session there. So our current grade is a C, and she gave us kind of an overview of why we have this grade. So one of the biggest things was the lack of signage that we have. So we have a lot of no smoking on campus, but we don't have including no vaping on campus. And we don't have, something we've actually done at Olentangie is put up our own signage just kind of to show like, this is what you're doing. It's, we put it in bathrooms around the school just to kind of combat against the problem. But we don't have that signage currently throughout the district. So implementing that would be a positive impact, and it could actually increase our grade. So in the enforcement by staff, that's just wordage. So, and we looked at our current policy. The wordage doesn't include anything about staff just being there to see. So we have student, we have teachers that'll stand outside their classrooms in between classes and just kinda monitor the bathrooms to see if there's anything suspicious going on. Just including that wordage was also increase the grade. And at all times 24/7, that's also talking about in visitor sections, at school sport events, and just throughout the day. So for our first offense, we currently have two Wednesday schools. Our second offense is three days in-school suspension, and then third is five days out-of-school suspension. So we compared this to other schools in the district, and, not in the district, I mean in the OCC. Sorry about that, but in the OCC. And so currently, their first defense is either an in-school suspension or an out-of-school suspension. And so this is, this is our proposal. We would like to increase the consequence that we currently have for our first offense to in-school or out-of-school suspension, just so we can keep up with the other OCC, and it will be a better solution to combating the problem.
In addition, just discouraging use constantly at school-sponsored events like basketball games, football games, whatever sporting events, dances. It just keeps it in the back of the student's mind, like, I should not be doing this. And it's just gonna make them more or less likely to do it. And then also, another suggestion is including vaping products under drug paraphernalia because these products, they could contain, they could just be nicotine, they could be THC oil, they could be something else. But it's too expensive to test it, so just classifying it as drug paraphernalia will prevent a lot more students from doing this.
So another thing we can do is increase, increase signage and education programs in Olentangie. One program we've done some research on is the Catch My Breath program. And this program is a free educational program about the dangers of vaping and the effects of it. And they have lesson plans for all grade levels, and they can be implemented in Olentangie local schools. The great thing about this would be that kids younger than high school would be experiencing and getting some, just learning about the dangers of vaping before it's too late. Because what we're seeing is that kids are coming to high school already vaping. You know, I think there's been some cases in our district of 5th graders who vape. And it's just something that needs to be started earlier. None of us, there's so little smoking in high school, and that's because it's been hammered into us for so long that smoking is bad, smoking kills, and it does. But because vaping is such a new practice and a normalized practice, and there's been so little education, students do not have the knowledge to say no to it when they get to high school.
Awesome, guys. Thank you so much for listening today. We thank you. And are there any questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Awesome. We'd love to hear them.
Well, when I don't have any questions, when I think the presentation. Well, I don't have any questions, but I think, uh, the presentation was very strong, very good.
Thank you.
I guess we would, I won't say defer, but refer the issue to the policy committee to take under consideration any changes we need, um, to consider to our current policies to make sure that, uh, we're staying current, right, because I think we're probably lagging. It feels like we're lagging.
Definitely.
But certainly...
Did we not just change our policies at one of the last meetings to add e-cigarettes and vaping and that type of paraphernalia to it?
They're referring to it as student handbook language.
Handbook, yeah.
Okay. Because it's board policy, so it certainly can be easily translated into student handbooks to be consistent with policy. I'm a little, I'm not sure about us being able to classify it as drug paraphernalia. Um, I'm afraid that would open up an entire different...
Well, we really, actually, we had, we had, we had a, one, one example of what we consider drug paraphernalia was, uh, Visine. Back in the day, kids, kids would...
Oh, because they would put it in their eyes so they wouldn't be bloodshot.
Right. And so, depending on the, depending on the circumstances of what you found it up.
You can broadly define it.
You can broad, you can broadly define it. Um, you know, this is something Mr. Wright has been researching with the other OCC schools. It's a prevalent, you know, issue that the high school principals have, have discussed with us. Um, it's probably the number-one societal issue I hear from our parents about what are we going to do to stop the vaping problem?
We're not selling it in the cafeteria.
No, we're not. But that's why when these guys came forward with this presentation for us, I was so, so, so impressed with us, because I do know, you left out the stat about the lungs.
Yeah, I was going to ask you some medical questions, because it's new, so I don't know how much research is there.
We actually took, so it was us four plus another student, and the student that went along with us has been vaping for about a year and a half. We took a spirometry test, which is a lung capacity test. It's effort-based, so, um, what they did, what we did is we put in our weight, our height, our gender, and our race, is that right? And our age. And what we did is we had three attempts, and we had to breathe in as deeply as we could. We looked absolutely ridiculous doing it, and we had to push all of our air out into this machine, and it basically told us how old our lungs were. And all four of us who don't vape, our lungs registered seventeen and eighteen years old. And the student that did vape that came with us, his lungs registered at twenty-eight years old, after a year and a half of vaping.
Wow.
And so we were able to see that difference, and that's one of our favorite statistics to actually share, because it shows that impact. And by telling students that, we've actually had a couple of people be like, that's it, like, I'm throwing my Juul away, this is, I'm, I'm done with that. And so that's been really cool to see those successes.
Mr. G's in the back, right?
Yeah.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yeah?
So, so one of your students here brought up the idea that your, or the process by which you're finding more students and you're, you're having more traffic, more kids that are engaged in this. Um, tell me what happens, um, when you, when a student is found, and how, how do you address the parents, and what are the parents saying?
Well, so we, we'll catch you in the bathroom. Kind of a strange thing is when we find more than one student in the same stall. Two or three boys or two or three girls go in the same stall, so that's pretty much a, they're vaping, passing it around. Um, so initially, it's two Wednesday schools, so, parents aren't too upset, kids aren't too upset, and...
And so, sorry, Claire, what are, what are two Wednesday schools?
Is it after-school?
A Wednesday school is a, is a three-hour detention on Wednesdays, so it's three hours, so, two forty-five.
Could be with my husband.
So...
Oh, so three hours with Mr. Weasel?
Yeah.
That's punishment.
Yeah.
So, so they get two of those, two three-hour Wednesday schools, so after-school, um, and we call the parents, let them know, and they will, uh, we offer to them the opportunity to come in and get their property, because it's not our property. Um, a lot of times they'll come and get it, which we know that it goes back in.
Yeah.
They did institute a no penalty box. Uh, we have had one instance where a vape went into the penalty box. Um, the girl said, I brought it to put it in, I swear, whether she was telling me the truth or not, I didn't have to call her parents, I didn't have to give it back, because she wanted it in a no penalty box. So the truth was no penalty, but I did, I know, because it went to the box and was destroyed, so it did not go back into circulation, uh, in the population that goes. So, uh, but most of the time, parents are, are disappointed in the choices their kids are making, um, and that's what we hear from them. I don't know that it's not necessarily they're coming to get the vape pen and give it back to them. Um, it, it, we know that it's happened in certain circumstances where the vape pen is shown back up. Um, we know we faked it and gave it back to the adult, and it, it did happen, yeah.
What, what's your, what's your feel for the number of repeat offenders from that first one to the second to the third? Are you seeing a lot of repeats, or are you just not catching the repeats?
Or they're smarter.
Or they're smarter, yeah.
Well, and, and the other thing is, I, I've asked my teachers, take their phone as their, that's their, their pass, so they can't take their phones in the restroom. So if Mr. Henry's standing in front of that restroom that they're going to vape in, they can't text their friend and say, hey, let's go down to the fifteen-hundred hallway instead of that one, because Mr. Henry's standing outside. So, it, and, again, autonomy in the classroom, I'm not going to dictate rules to them, but I think that is an effective way to at least stop the meeting up that they were talking about. Um, so, yeah, and when we, as far as repeat offenders, we, we've had, we've had our share. Uh, when we get to that, you know, when they're going to be out of school, they're, they're more likely to, to back off or hide it, or, um, you know, and, and the kids are smart. The kids are, the girls are putting it in their, in their shirts, the boys are putting it in the wastebank, and they know we're not coming there to get, um, and they, if they don't have it on, um, um, then we can, of course, um, and...
Right. And the other, I mean, you know, when you're, back in the day with tobacco, you smell, you could smell tobacco. You'd smell it out in the hallway, and you don't, and, and this stuff is so, um, it's so hard to detect. It's like, kids, kids are so bold that they do, they'll blow it in their, and, and again, I think a lot of us as adults, naturally, we trust the kids, we're, I always say trust yet verify, but we're not as, and that's why these public ad campaigns work, and while I thought it was so important for this group to come to present to you public, so we can blast it out, more, more publicity about it, these public ad, I guarantee you, all, most of the adults in the, sitting in our audience, they have no idea what a Juul is, or are aware of what's in the Juuls, or the other, other drugs, the synthetic drugs that can be in Juuls and all those things. Sheriff Martin will tell you, you can't incarcer, incarcerate away the drug problem.
Right.
You can help with, with education. They came already and presented to our middle school principals and, and pushed this education program, so we're looking at ways to incorporate that, and so...
And like they said, the kids, the kids are raised, um, you know, they'll be sitting right in the classroom, they'll be staring the teacher right in the eye, and, you know, the teacher looks at them, or they'll look down to their book bag, they'll hit their vape and blow smoke, give them the book bag, or they start swallowing. So, swallowing that smoke, I don't, what are, what are the, you know, what are the, you know, what are the twenty-eight-year-old, one of the seventeen-year-old, I don't, you know, what are the effects of that? So, I'm not sure about that, I'm just joking.
Well, I want, oh, go ahead. I wanted to know, um, how Representative Carfagna reacted, because unfortunately, now there is a vaping association, and they're lobbying.
So he actually was unaware of a lot of e-cigarette usage. A lot of the, um, information that we told him, he was uneducated on, and he said that he just hadn't known that it was considered a safer alternative, but we explained to him that, no, it's not a safer alternative. And we showed him statistics, like our lung screening, and went through all of our research that we conducted, and he was really shocked, and he said that he'd be on board to help us with this, and that it's a problem that we should combat. And he, he represents the east side of our county.
Right.
So he said that he's not sure if he's able to go through with that, like, with going straight into the county, but he said that we would talk to townships, we would meet with other people, and his, um, legislative aide Drew Crooper, he's going to be doing more research, and they're going to get back to us, and I think we're going to meet again soon.
Yeah, because you're going to be, the vaping association is going to be hitting the State House hard, and they have, unfortunately, money.
They got lots of money.
And another problem was, the reason Powell was able to pass it, because they're a city.
Yeah.
Um, we were originally shooting for, you know, Delaware County Track of Twenty-One. Unfortunately, the county does not have the jurisdiction to...
Right.
...make a law like that. Um, so we're, we're still researching, um, like, you know, what can do in Lewis Center, what we can do in Delaware, you know, how we can actually make an effect with it that's going to, um, you know, be widespread, because the problem with Justin Powell, that there being this ban, is that kids can, there's literally a point where you can walk across the street from one gas station to a get-go. And at the one gas station, you have to be twenty-one to buy an e-cigarette, and at the other, you have to be eighteen to buy an cigarette.
And what's the penalty if a eighteen-year-old sells a Juul to a thirteen-year-old?
So, oh, like legally or in the schools?
Yeah, legally.
So, uh, through our contact Judge Hermanowski, who's the juvenile court justice, um, he, it's basically a...
It's a status offense.
Yes, a status offense. So you can only be, um, since you're underage, it's, you can explain it better, like...
So if you're underage, it's a status offense, so it goes on your record, but it usually, um, most of the cases, he said, that they find if e-cigarettes are attached with something else, so it could be alcohol or drug use. So he said they usually go into that, and they kind of ignore the e-cigarette. He said that's something they're trying to discuss more and figure out how they should do it, because it is a status offense, so it's not going to be on your permanent record. It's going to go away through time, usually community service, he said. So they'll have students go out and they'll clean up trash somewhere, or they'll do things in the school, but it's nothing that's extreme, and that's something that they need to discuss, and they were going to look into.
Um, I, I got a email from the principal, um, Liberty, and Liberty has a group of students that's got the same initiative, and they posted a, um, an, an app, it was an app where you could get help getting off. So this is my question. I, I haven't ever been addicted to nicotine. I hear that the nicotine contained in Juuls is like an entire pack of cigarettes as opposed to one cigarette. And so are students, are they going to be going through withdrawal in the middle of class? What happens? You start shaking, right?
Yeah, um, with the whole withdrawal process, things that we've been researching through that, we see a lot of changes in sleep patterns when students are going through this withdrawal. Uh, hard, they have a hard time focusing in class. The shaking, like you said, um, just like maybe some even depression and anxiety has been seen as well. So yes, the withdrawal symptoms are there, and they're real. And so that's just, um...
And so if you are a student that has been vaping for a year, and you have a nicotine addiction, are you supposed to slowly go down on your nicotine? Is that the protocol to...
It's more harmful on the brain if you are under the age of twenty-five, because brain development doesn't end until...
Right.
So it's becoming a bigger problem, because you're getting addicted sooner, and with the Juul, it's an aerosol, so you're actually getting in more nicotine. It's coming in faster than it would with you smoking a combustible cigarette. And we see that it's a, um, kind of an issue, because they are struggling to get rid of it. I know someone, actually, she's a sophomore at Olentangie, and her mom has bought her a nicotine gum, because she's trying to get her, to get off of it.
Right.
And she's struggling with it. She's come to school, she's tired, she's irritable, she's struggling with it, and it's a serious problem.
A misconception is that vaping will help you quit...
Right.
...a nicotine addiction. Um, we don't have the graph with us, but there's a chart that shows, um, time and nicotine in your blood level, um, and nicotine, the nicotine in a Juul, um, it's essentially designed to get you addicted to it. So you do a big spike of nicotine, that then crashes very fast, so you need more of it, more of it, more of it. Um, and so, whereas Juuls may have some, you know, better effects than smoking, like, you know, it's not as smelly, or it's not, it's not as, you know, harmful on your family members, um, it, it does not help people quit a nicotine addiction.
So something I wanted to add, so when we met with Rick Carfagna, one big thing he really wanted to say was, if kids are doing this, doesn't mean that they're not smoking, but smoking has been on the decline since the nineties. Like, kids aren't doing that anymore, because they think it's disgusting.
Right.
We've been told our whole lives how bad it is. So, really, it's not just keeping kids from smoking, it's drawing them into a nicotine addiction, and it could be called a gateway. We don't know the long-term effects, but it could be a gateway to smoking.
I think smoking is shame, like, my own kids look at a smoker like, they're smoking, you know, it's very shameful.
Dirty, yeah.
It's dirty, it smells, and I said, well, why, why do kids Juul? I mean, it's, it's bad for you.
There's no smell.
And they're like, well, there's no smell.
No smell.
Or it tastes like mangoes, you know, so I think kids have to shame each other.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, and there needs to be a lot of support from parents at home about their expectations and, you know, not having nicotine-dependent children.
Yeah, I agree with that. And with our statistic that said you're likely to encounter a student vaping fifty-six percent of the time, well, at fifty-six percent of the time that you're encountering a student vaping, no one's saying anything about it, because students have this perception that vaping is harmless and that it's not as bad for you. So that's something that we're also trying to combat, and a way to kind of do that, uh, like you said, how smoking and, like, smoking cigarettes has that negative connotation to it, is referring to them as e-cigarettes instead of vaping devices or Juuls, because when people hear that cigarette, they're like, ew, like, that's gross. And so by referring it as an e-cigarette, it kind of helps create that negative connotation around it.
All right, so it sounds like we have two things, right? Policy committee...
We got it.
...to look at some policy, and then maybe administration to look at some...
Signage.
...education and preventive programs.
Signage, yeah, you bet.
Thank you, great job.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Great.
Luck at Nationals.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, our final presentation item is Liberty High School locker room edition, Jay Boone, Moody Nolan and team.
There's a whole, whole crew of them. Good luck following that presentation. See you, guys.
Night, thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having us here this evening. Um, my name's Darren Meek, I'm the athletic director at Liberty High School, and I have with me Jay Boone, who is an architect with Moody Nolan.
We're getting used to seeing Jake.
Yeah. Also have Eric Kunnar, our president of Liberty Athletic Boosters, uh, parent rep, and also parent rep Mark Johnson, uh, who's acted as a project coordinator. Uh, and I will be, uh, brief, I just wanted to, to give an overview, and, and certainly thank and acknowledge our planning committee. We've had a, a group of six parents that have met regularly with me over the last three months in, uh, planning and, and having discussions on, on a need for, uh, stadium locker room facilities. Uh... Nope. Oh, there we go. So just a brief overview from my end, and, and then I'll turn it over to these gentlemen. Uh, as far as a, a need, currently, you know, we feel we, we have outgrown at Liberty the existing, uh, locker room facilities, uh, that we have. Uh, our largest locker room, our largest male locker room, has a maximum capacity of forty-three, and our largest, uh, female is, is thirty-seven. So again, these are the, the original locker rooms when the, the high school was, was first built. Our football team...
Yeah.
...currently has, the last three years, we've had over one hundred members. Now, we do have, uh, probably the largest football team number-wise in, in central Ohio. Uh, in the last three years, we've exceeded the, the one hundred number, so it, it is getting, getting awfully cramped in, in our existing locker room. Uh, we're averaging a, a little over thirteen-hundred, uh, close to fourteen-hundred student athletes at Liberty over the last three years. This year, we're also tracking, where we're going to have about fourteen-hundred student athletes. Uh, so the, the population of our student athlete continues, continues to increase. Uh, the limited locker room space that we have, we have seven in Liberty High School. Four of those are male locker rooms, and three of those are female locker rooms. Uh, the largest female locker room is also, uh, for example, in the fall, we have two of our sport teams, two full sport teams that utilize one female locker room. A third shares it a little bit, but what's making it difficult is when our visiting teams come in, for example, a visiting team on, uh, Friday night football, they're also using that same locker room, because it's the largest female locker room that we have. So, so we feel, you know, that's another, uh, issue that's worth addressing. And then as a result of the increase in our student athletes, we've had an increase, uh, in the number of coaches, which is a positive thing. Uh, we feel very good, obviously, with the ratios, but with the increase of coaches, and of course, you know, they, they need some increase in their own locker room space, or meeting space, or what have you. So, those are just some of the, some of the points as to, uh, why we feel a need. Uh, the other area, uh, there are safety concerns, and, and these are not anything that's new. Perhaps we've seen a recent increase over the last couple of years, maybe it's due to the, the growth, uh, maybe it's due to the highly competitiveness that's in today's, uh, high school sports. Uh, the, the team egress for, uh, high-capacity events, in our current structure, there's only one way out. There's, there's only one way out, and, and we feel if a locker room was at the opposite end, certainly a home locker room, uh, that would certainly help with exiting, uh, after highly contested games, and it would certainly deter anyone from trying to get to, to an official or what have you. Uh, the proposed design of the locker room, which Jay Boone will get into, though... into, will also be a place that could be used, uh, for the officials. Uh, certainly the distance, all of you are familiar enough with the distance, that, uh, our teams, uh, officials have to travel to the locker rooms. We're utilizing gators currently, uh, to transport officials, and, and unfortunately, we've had a gator incident a few years ago that, that caused quite an issue, uh, for us as well. So it'd certainly be nice not to have to use gators, uh, during the football Friday nights, uh, in particular. Uh, inclement weather accommodations, uh, you know, with the distance of the school right now, we're taking every measure possible. Our people are doing a great job with it, but, uh, we're basically utilizing the restrooms at the stadium. So if there's inclement weather, uh, you know, example, uh, last spring, we happened to be in a tournament game, Liberty and, and Oland Tangi. We got one of those spring storms that came in all of, out of a sudden, put one team in one restroom, one in the other. Because it was a tournament game, we had to wait the full 90 minutes. Not an ideal situation during, during one of those storms. I have the girls in, in restrooms waiting out the, the weather issue. So, uh, that's common. And then just simply overcrowding. OSU's doing an excellent job in the sport med athletic training and, and strength and conditioning program, but they're certainly, you know, seeing some additional stress from the, uh, the increase in, in numbers, uh, with the athletic training room and the weight room. Uh, so as far as, uh, what type of positive impact, uh, this could have, um, with the proposed locker rooms at the stadium, there will be eight sport teams that would be housed in these, four female and four male, and they would share them depending upon the season. So for example, in the fall, football would have, uh, a locker room, and then in the spring, boys lacrosse would have that same locker room. Girls soccer in the fall, girls lacrosse in the spring. Uh, the numbers next to them show you the current numbers that we have, uh, the overall population of those respective sports. And, uh, aside from our high numbers, we're, we're continuing to cut as well. So we're still addressing the, the cut issue, uh, you know, which is not something any of us like to do. Uh, additional positive impact, there'll be at least five, uh, other sport teams that could benefit, even though they won't have occupancy. When you think of cheerleading on Friday night, certainly they'll be able to utilize that, that side of the female locker room where field hockey would have. They would also have a place, again, inclement weather, perhaps a quick meeting, certainly just to go to the restrooms and not use the public restrooms at the stadium. Uh, boys and girls cross-country, again, they won't have a locker room there, but beginning and ending their practices sure would be nice to take advantage of the athletic training room. If they finish their practice at the stadium, go in, get their treatment, grab their ice, and, and go home. And the same would be said for, for boys track and field, and girls track and field, and, and those high-numbered sports. So those are some of the overall, uh, positive impacts that we see. And I know part of this, uh, that we talked about at the last facilities committee meeting was also our need for baseball and softball restrooms right at the complex. So we feel if this, uh, proposal were to go through, i- it would make sense, uh, to possibly also address the public restroom need there. Uh, ever since we put turf in, uh, four years ago at baseball, the usage has been phenomenal, not just with our high school teams in the area, but our youth programs and, uh, the summer travel teams that are in there. We're hosting, uh, national and state tournaments, and three or four, uh, Porta John's can only accommodate so many. The, the nearest restroom right now for that facility is 500 feet away. So that could be a phase two. But with that being said, and, and to get into a little bit of the design and structure and architect stuff, I'm going to turn it over to Jay Boone.
Thank you, Darren, and thank you for having me yet again.
Yeah.
Is the, uh, I guess I can start with the site plan, if the site plan is available?
We can go off the turn.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got it.
Describe it without the vis, without the, uh, screens. Um, really, the, this is a, a multi-component project. The, uh, I'll start with the locker room. Again, as Darren said, this is, uh, really a boys and girls lockers on both sides with multi uses, the athletic training, and the coaches' room is, uh, splitting the two. We have made it as private from the outside, the field side as possible with the way that the door swings and the door locations. Um, we also, uh, have tried in a, the site plan to orient this building a variety of ways. Uh, we have turned it 90 degrees, well, it's oriented north and south now. Uh, there is a tremendous amount of electric sanitary water irrigation lines through there, and this is the best, uh, that we have come up with, the most cost-effective orientation of the building. Um, you'll see also on the site plan, so this is, really connects, uh, it's five feet away from the existing north concession stand. You'll see in the site plan that it, uh, there's a little crosshatched area. That is a potential future phase, which, uh, could be a fitness weight room, uh, that Darren had spoken about. The track, uh, garage, track barn, storage area remains intact where it is. If you go to the far, uh, north, up by where the new batting facility is, you'll see that the restrooms, batting facility, uh, restrooms are up there. Uh, they have been pulled away from the building that is almost completed, and the reason for that is that there's a potential future phase to eventually connect the two with a smaller area between, between them for baseball. So that's why it's pulled away at this current time.
So the, the facility that you, now, that's not going to have public restroom, restrooms that they, you could use for the baseball fields.
Right, that's not on here.
So that, so that the, it would be best to put them in here?
Correct, correct. The existing building that's going up now does not have.
Right, that we can see.
Yes, correct.
Right, okay.
So that's the site plan. Um, I don't want to get into the details, but the, uh. Any, does anyone have any questions on the actual physical facility?
I apologize, I've been out, so I didn't get to sit in facilities committee. I do, I just have a couple of questions that popped up, and so.
Sure.
There's a disparity in the number of lockers available between female athletes and male athletes, but your numbers show that there, in some cases, is as many female athletes as male athletes for these sports?
I'll be looking for help for that answer.
No, I'm looking, I'm, I'm just asking the question as to why that is, and then also the number of actual stalls, restrooms compared for the girls' teams and the boys' teams?
The restrooms on.
Just asking the question.
On the boy's side is more geared towards the larger amount of football.
Right.
Teams, and that's got the larger amount of, uh, showers and, um, fixtures. The women's, I think the biggest, uh, number of lockers is, uh.
I counted 50 total.
Well, some of them are.
Just based on your number.
Okay.
Is that, is there, am I missing something in the, go, yeah, go ahead, Darren, I'm just trying to.
Please.
Yeah, really, with the design, the total numbers, you see that encompasses all three run. So I guess I want some clear freshman or JBB, JBA varsity. Under this proposal, we would hope to at least be able to accommodate the JBA and the varsity teams, and then that would allow the freshman JBB teams to use the existing locker rooms in the high school.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So that's, that's why football locker room, the J is designed, I think it's for 105, that would match our varsity numbers, but for 40 to 50 freshmen, they would then occupy one of the existing locker rooms in the high school.
Okay.
Same with all schools.
And if I could ask, how many total lockers do we currently have, boys and girls, at Liberty High School? Sports, you said there's 1,400 student athletes, but how many sport lockers are there?
I would say, uh, you know, the football locker room.
It's not for management.
They have enough, what the, what they do is they're half lockers, so there's enough, everyone has a lock.
But we're just out of space.
Yes. And I think, checking, correct me if I'm wrong, over the last 40 years, we could probably brought in close to 25 additional portable lockers, just like I'll make that set.
Jay, what's the square footage on this building?
The, uh, the main locker room is in the 5,400 square foot range. The toilet rooms up on the north end are 650 square feet.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Any other questions on the building? Anything else?
All right, give us the news.
Give us the really good.
How are you going to pay for this?
How are we going to pay for this?
Tell us the numbers, buddy.
Those are always the questions you ask me.
Uh-huh.
Um.
Because you have all the answers for these.
Yeah, right, yeah. Um, let me, let me kind of refresh everybody. Uh, my name's Eric Kounar, I'm the Liberty Booster President. Um, a little bit about the structure, because I think it plays in well to, uh, supporting the eight teams. Um, the way we're structured from a booster perspective is, uh, we have a, a five-person board that oversees all the varsity teams. Each team has their own booster representation, and we still kind of take the, the seven to 12, um, uh, model to where we roll up both Hyatt's and Liberty under our varsity programs. So when it comes to fundraising, things like that, you know, middle schools sometimes don't have the funds. We roll it up, so for instance, uh, the varsity football team does the OSU tickets. Hyatt's middle school team does the OSU tickets and benefit from that revenue. So, um, part of that is the process in which we've created a culture, uh, over the last four years. Um, we no longer go door-to-door. We don't solicit, um, money from, from parents. Um, we're more web-oriented, so, uh, when you look at our, our camps and paying online, um, parents doing, uh, volunteer work at their place of business, and the place of business is matching gifts. So we've, we've already transformed the way we raise money, uh, at Liberty. We're looking more corporate sponsorships, um, sponsorships, uh, in collaboration with the athletic department, um, and away from the parents. Um, looking at how this kind of evolved, typically, when you look at, you know, uh, a basketball team or a football team, those revenue-generating sports, uh, this really evolved from boys soccer, girls soccer, field hockey, um, boys and girls lacrosse. Uh, those parents, um, as, as Darren mentioned, you know, the 1,400 students, you know, girls soccer, they get their stuff, they change in, uh, a locker room, they grab their bags, and they're hauling everything out to the fields. Um, softball, they're getting dressed and they're hauling bags and stuff up to the fields. Um, so when you, when you look at kind of the way we've created our, our, um, organization, um, it's, it's kind of a, a grassroots approach from those other sports. Um, I always like to ask, you know, the question, why? And, you know, as a, as a booster organization, you know, we're helping with pay-to-play. We're helping, uh, with banners. We're helping with some uniforms, stuff like that. Um, but when you, when you look at overcrowding, um, I think part of the booster organization is to provide solutions. And, and this is, in, in our, in our world, a potential solution. So as, as Darren mentioned, uh, we created a six-member subcommittee. Uh, been meeting, uh, almost every week the last three months, met with the facilities committee here to get an understanding of what the criteria is, energy efficient, things like that. And, uh, I think we have a pretty robust plan. Um, you know, I came from a, a small school in northeast Ohio, and, uh, three years ago, they put in turf, a scoreboard, and redid a 1929 brick fence. They did it with corporate sponsorships, they did it with alumni, they didn't go to the parents. Uh, they had a, a Columbus alumni, um, affiliation dinner to raise money. And I think when you look at taking that approach and some of the partnerships, uh, we have two representatives from Windfall, one of the, um, fundraising groups, and when you look at the work that they're doing at Youngstown State and, uh, schools like Austintown Fitch up by Youngstown, I think taking that model and formulate it for what we need, um, it's, it's a big number, um, but I think it can be done. So, um, I have Mark Johnson here. Um, he's one of our newest members of the LAB board, and he'll go through, uh, the fundraising.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Uh, thanks for having me. So I'm Mark Johnson, and I am, um, one of the newest members of the boosters, uh, booster club here. And, you know, one of the things that we, we talked about was, um, you know, just myself, I have four kids, two of them graduated from Oland Tangi Liberty, and two are still, one's in grade school, one's in middle school. So, you know, as a parent, um, and as somebody that lives in Liberty Township as a taxpayer, I mean, I, I find this project really beneficial, um, both short-term and long-term, just from health, safety, and, and just outgrowing of, um, of our student athletes. So where are we going to get the money, right? That's the big question. Um, so estimated project costs right now are between a million to a million three. Um, it just depends on, you know, we, we're still taking a look at a couple of things, um, depending on the restrooms, depending on maybe adding some additional space if, if, if we need to, but probably low-end a million, higher-end a million three. Right now, we have, uh, about $200,000 committed to this project, um, through the bo, booster sports teams. So we feel good about the $200,000. We've also got $100,000 from LAB, um, and the athletic department. So we've got about $300,000 raised at this point out of that, uh, projected total. And, um, you know, what we're doing, as Eric mentioned, we have, um, our, our new relationship with Windfall. They're professional fundraisers, and we're also talking to another professional fundraising group right now, Kramer and Associates. Um, and, you know, they both bring something different to the table. Um, we feel pretty good about the talks that we've had with them in terms of, you know, depending on the amount of dollars that we want to raise, is this feasible? Um, both of them have, have said, you know, they, they absolutely believe that this is feasible, that we can raise these kinds of dollars. You know, these are all going to be private, private funds. I mean, donors, um, you know, in, in the district, um, or I guess within Oland Tangi Liberty. I have talked, uh, personally, I've talked to First Commonwealth Bank, which is our bank that we use. They are very much interested in, um, you know, getting involved with us in terms of loan. What they have told me was that, that because of the fact that this would be, um, you know, they won't have a mortgage on the property, right? So it's unsecured. Um, that, that adds a little bit to it, and so they said, you know, you probably need to raise, uh, or have committed 50 to six, 50 to 60% of the funds. Um, but they, but they do want to be involved with us, and, and they have given a verbal commitment to get involved. We also, um, on the turf project, we worked with a financial company called Rakasa. I meant, some of you know that, many of you know them. They have also agreed to help us with, um, what we had called the loaners and donors program for the turf, where we went out to, um, you know, our, our donors and asked, you know, if you're not able to make a donation, would you be willing to loan money? Again, on a non-seared basis. Um, and, and Rakasa said, yes, you know, we will help again with that program, do the underwriting, you know, issue the notes, um, help you administer the notes and the note payments. And so, you know, at this point, you know, between the funds that we have, the 300,000, you know, we've hired, uh, Windfall, we're, we're thinking about getting Kramer and Associates involved as another professional fundraising group, and talking with banks and things like that. I mean, we feel like we're in a really good position, um, to get the funds raised and to get going on the project. So with that, I would open it up to questions.
What's your timeline?
Go ahead.
Timeline? Yeah, what do, what do you guys shoot for as a, kind of your, and if this was in the facilities committee, again, I apologize, I was out.
So what we'd have to do, so it, it is understood that, um, this project would be fully funded. So it would be, um, let's say the million dollar, the million dollars would be gifted to the district, um, and then bid out through, um, collaboration through, uh, the district for, uh, finding the, um.
The contractor.
The contractors, thank you. So that has to be done by August. By August of 19.
Wow.
September of 2019, the, the earliest break in Oland Tangi construction, and we're looking March 2020 realistically.
To open.
So really, for us tonight, it's really an inform, there's no decision to be made or vote to be taken?
Right, right.
Right, because it's, it feels like the, you've still got some work to do on the financing, and then once the financing's secured, then I think you'd come back and we'd talk more about, you know, moving forward.
Right, we wanted to bring it before the board, you know, if we're out, um, fundraising again, you know, this is going to be to corporations, it's going to be to, uh, individuals within the district. Uh, we wanted to make sure that, um, the board was aware.
We wanted to make sure that the board was aware, and knowing that, you know, we vetted this out to, it's a, it's a possible task.
And I have a question, I don't know, Eric, if you can answer, if Darren can answer. Is your TURF paid off?
Yes.
Okay. And then what about the fundraising that's been done for the baseball facility? Is that fully funded? Because what I don't want you to do is you're tap, you know, tapping into the same people, you know, for, to get money to build these new additions.
Right, well, so a couple of things. One is the TURF is paid off, the baseball TURF is paid off, and there's a revenue stream for the indoor hitting facility. What's, what's, what really got our interest going is, back in the day, when we needed loners and donors, and this is kind of before my time, on the TURF, that was driven a lot by boys and girls soccer parents. And those boys and sock, girl soccer parents, and those kids have already graduated, they're still interested in participating in this. So that, you know, when you talk about Mark's kids being younger, you know, that would benefit from this, we have parents in those programs that their kids have already graduated that want to be part of this, and I think that's pretty special.
And I think to Julie's point, there is a track record here of being able to raise the money, right? So I think it's encouraging. So Eric, as a board, the approach we've taken is, share us the plan, come back when you have the financing, and then, you know, move forward.
Yeah, I'm, typically in the, with the booster parents and their coaches, I'm the bad guy, because I'm kind of the voice of reason. You know, they want this, and I said, "We need this." But, you know, especially talking to the Windfall folks, seeing what they're doing at Youngstown State, talking to, like I said, people from my hometown, Austintown Fitch, Oregon, Ohio, who's doing these projects. And when you look at this, going to the right people and not to the parents. My brother just built a new facility over in Dublin. He's a physician, and he had people donating to put their name on physician rooms. So the money's there, it's just, you know, having the right purpose and showing a need. And I think, you know, between Kramer, Windfall, and some of the contacts we have, I think we have the ability to do that.
And then just a question on the use of the facility. You know, in the summer, you guys are having a lot of lacrosse and even baseball tournaments and everything, so the, your, the facilities are in use. Would this be in, would this locker room be in use for those types of tournaments that aren't school-related?
No, I, I don't think we would want that.
That's what I'm worried about, the wear and tear.
Good question. Certainly the summer training and the workouts, all of our high school teams are going and having the facility open with the training room during that period of time, which is usually until noon during the summer. But no, I don't anticipate us opening this up to the non-school district teens.
Darren, what was the, what was the all-in cost on the baseball hitting facility? I don't recall what that ended up as.
Yeah, that ended up a little over $400,000.
So now you're gonna go with locker rooms and showers and everything else, and one to 1.3 million? Are we sure about that? Because the locker room started, or the wrestling room at Liberty started at a million, ended up at, what, 1.8? 1.6, something like that?
No, you're right. Wrestling ended up being closer to two.
So I mean, I, I mean, I know that's a, you know, with, because you're adding a whole different set of parameters to that building as opposed to what you have, and so I'm just wondering if, how close you feel or feel about that one to 1.3. Maybe that's a vague question.
Jay? Because Jay worked on the wrestling.
You don't have to, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Just to be cautious.
Yeah, because I mean, I love the idea, I'm not against the idea at all, I just want to make sure that, you know, you, you don't end up like some of those last-second discussions we had around the wrestling room, which was, oops, where's the rest gonna come from?
One of the things in the facilities would be to make sure that we had enough money to cover creep.
Cover what, please?
To cover basically scope creep.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So, you know, that would be part of the funding as well. One of the questions was realistic between 101 and 3.
It depends on where the scope goes. I've been working with these gentlemen for a couple of months now, and the scope keeps increasing a little bit. We are working currently to reduce it. I believe we are done with the parameters of design and the scope of the project. We were now in a backup position by engineering some things out to get it down to that, to keep it within that range. The wrestling facility was, I, the older I get, the worse my memory gets, but it was just over a million, I want to say. That didn't include the restrooms, and that didn't include some add-ons that were done after the fact that, after I was gone. So that was an alternate that was taken after the fact.
I want to make sure, the million-dollar, million-three range, does that include the separate toilet facility?
That included the separate toilet facility.
And the idea was just the scope of work, you know, if we have people doing a lot there, be able to get the benefit of going up 500 feet and laying the wall there as well.
Okay. Any other questions?
I want to, I want to say you've identified a problem and done a lot of, a lot of work to remedy a solution for it, which I appreciate.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great project.
All right, thanks.
Good luck.
All right, so the next agenda item is the board president's report, and certainly we've got just two quick comments that I want to make, brief comments. One is, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't at least recognize the passing of Robert Bell, who's our head custodian at Liberty High School, president of that union, you know, longtime employee within Olentangie, someone who really loved the district. It was very unfortunate with his sudden passing, and certainly I think we as a board would pass our condolences on to his family. Second is, you know, also kind of in this thankful mode is teacher's strikes. You know, if you look at Denver, City of Los Angeles, there's been nine teacher's strikes in the last 12 months across the country, and I think it's time, a fortunate time to acknowledge the strength of the partnership we have with our collective bargaining units and how the administration and the staff work together. You know, you don't want to ever get in a wrong situation.
Right.
Where you're talking about a walkout or a strike, and they seem to be happening more often, it's very much in the press. And I think we're very fortunate to be in the position that we're in, to have very strong relationships with, with the staff and with, with the units, and I wanted to make sure we recognize that tonight, as there's significant anticipation that we're gonna see more of this, not less, and I think it's gonna be an issue that we're gonna have to really stay ahead of and not behind. So those are the two things I want to cover. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ray for superintendent's report.
Good evening and thank you. Thank you for all the great presentations so far. We typically say they're gonna last between five and 10 minutes, and those just seem to go on, but they were very valuable, so we appreciate it. And I really appreciate the comments about Mr. Bell. I didn't include this in my superintendent's report, because I didn't want to get, didn't want to break up, because Robert was certainly a good friend of the district, but he was also a very good personal friend of mine, so we, they still have not let us know about arrangements, as family's very private, and, and I'm not sure that, that we will have him, but he is certainly somebody who did love the district, that's for sure. So with that, I'm gonna, I got a lot of great things to share. We, we did host our fifth annual One Community Conference, we had close to 500 attendees. The theme for the conference was Allies and Advocates for students, and, you know, so all of the presentations centered around that. I want to give, you know, Jack and Peggy and the team, and the, Jackie Powers and Heather Cole and all the diversity liaisons and all the staff members who, who made that happen. It's really gaining more traction every year. Heard a lot of positive, got a lot of good, positive emails regarding that, so thank you for your support of that conference. Liberty Tree Elementary School did something really interesting. They, they did a project called Why You Matter. It was actually a idea of John Juravich's, so we had about 700 students displayed throughout, photographs of 700 students displayed throughout the building. Students and staff showcasing each student and the staff member's unique statement about his or her most valuable trait. So it was just, it was really interesting to see that, very, very powerful for students and the adults. As you saw, you know, again, I just can't say enough about the deck of students from Olentangie and their presentation. They did get Judge Hamanowski out to speak to the student body about the legal ramifications of underage smoking, so Judge Hamanowski has been very, very supportive of them and all their efforts. So I, I look forward, they're getting ready for their state and national competitions moving forward. I think they're poised to do really well. And then I had the opportunity to attend the Black History Month Assembly at Orange High School. It was, it was really, really, just a great ceremony. They focused on the Harlem Renaissance and as their theme. I complimented the organizers, Mr. Lewis and Dr. Cox and Mr. Smith and his team, about the positive message, education, entertainment, and it just was such a positive message. There was a student who spoke, Cameron McCarthy, he's a junior, and he gave a speech he wrote. I went up to him after his president, after his speech and offered him my time at commencement. Instead of listening to me talk, the stu, every one of our graduating seniors, and the kids at Orange here, but it was just incredible. I'm ready to vote for him for president tomorrow. I asked him his political affiliation, he said, "Independent." So he was amazing. And then I'm sure you've seen this somewhere on social media, but Varsity Brands runs a contest for America's Most Spirited High School. Irland High School is a finalist. We have voting taking place up until February 20th, with the winner being announced May 11th.
You can vote every day.
Every day. Yes. Mr. Spinder reminds us of that by-
The minute.
And it's historic, yes. And then just one quick action item to highlight, approving the purchase from Tyler Technologies for Transportation Fleet Software. This is the software I referenced in my State of the Schools report. Gives us a lot more capabilities, and I think really one of the most important ones is the ability for parents to track the bus on an app, so that they'll know to the minute where their bus is and where their child is in terms of arrival, so. And as always, just a couple important dates coming up there. We do have, obviously, we don't have school tomorrow for professional development, and then the 18th for President's Day. And then coming up, the HR team is putting on our job fair here at Olentangie. What's, that, that area is for classified positions, and then in the future, we will be holding a certified job fair, so. And our next board meeting is 28th. Thank you.
Any questions from?
I had one, and I forgot it. I remember.
You can always call them tomorrow.
You might not know the answer to this, but I was wondering, I know that the One Community Conference, which was excellent, had the most ever people registered to attend, but I wondered if you had gotten the numbers of how many people actually attended.
450?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item eight, the treasurers report. Ms. Haffield?
Yes, please. Wanted to say good evening and happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Just a couple of updates from our department. We met with our finance and audit committee on February 7th. We had to postpone the meeting to that date from January due to the calamity days and the weather, but it was a really good meeting. We talked about educational materials and materials that we are compiling for our financial education pieces that we want to start putting forward for the community and for our staff. We also talked about our Cup Report statistics and the fact that we are at $11,000 or just slightly over for our cost per pupil, but we are still under our comparative group and the state average. The state average is $11,900, and I believe $53, forgive me, don't quote me on the $53, I didn't write that down, but it is, we are about $900 or more under the state average. So we talked about those statistics and that information. We reviewed our tax rates, health insurance, open enrollment, and some other items that we've discussed at prior board meetings. We also did some education on some of the various funds that come through on the financial statements to help clarify the difference between a bond fund and a construction fund, where those funds go, when we sell the bonds, where those money sit, how do we pay for debt, and how is that allocated through tax dollars. So it was a good conversation. We will meet again on April 15th to review the five-year forecast update, and we'll have a subcommittee that will also meet to look at the budgets as we move through that budgeting process. So those things will be coming up in the future. For tonight, we have just a couple of items on the agenda for approval, please. Again, we just have our minutes as for Ohio revised code compliance, that we always have those on the agenda for approval from previous meetings. We do have our tax budget on the agenda for approval. This is the last year that we will see this document come forward for board approval. The Delaware County Budget Commission has taken action, they've taken voted action to remove this requirement for us. We will, in the future, just submit our five-year forecast and share our debt repayment schedules with them, and they'll move forward with that information to look at tax rates. So we won't see this document after this year. And then finally, of course, we have the tax rate and estimated revenues, the official letter that is coming from the Delaware County Auditor's Office. As we presented our previously at a board meeting, discussing, discussing what we thought those rate estimates would be, they're right in line with those estimates, they didn't change. So our voted millage is at 84.3 mils. Our effective rate will be 53.7326. Cost per $100,000 valuation on a residential property will be $1,672.92. That's a roughly $3 reduction from our previous tax share. So staying pretty steady, we were able to take advantage of refinancing of our debt over the last two years, which allowed the debt millage effective rate to reduce on our debt payments from the 2016 bond issue, no new millage issuance that we had for the high school. So in that year, we had $1,800 cost per valuation, cost per $100,000 valuation, and we've been able to roll that down into that $1,600 range for our community. So that's a great positive message to share. We will continue to move forward with our budgeting and five-year forecast season, and we'll take any questions about that process, or if you have any questions about the tax information that we have, I will gladly take those.
Okay, anything from Ms. Haffield?
I have a question. Are any of your compatriot treasurers seeing anything about the Cup Patterson? Because that is the biggest secret being kept right now.
I, you know, when I talk to my colleagues, we're all kind of holding our breath, to be quite frank.
Yeah.
Because we've seen in the past where things have come forward about funding and calculations and, and information, and the governor then has vetoed it. So while we're trying to get information and understand those processes, to make sure that we're well-educated on it, it's not, like, everybody's just kind of waiting for that hold to see what's released and what it actually comes out to be. I've heard positive things about the Cup Patterson in that they're looking at it and trying to make it better, that there's, but I don't know what that momentum is. It's, we're all kind of in that holding pattern at this point.
Because the last I heard from the treasurer in Granville, Sobel, Mike Sobel, they were running simulations. And that was like in January.
Yes. Yes, and, you know, we, again, it's, it's just hard to tell. It's, there's nothing being released and published for us to really take a look at at this point, so.
Sobel's not talking.
No, not very many from that group are.
I think it's because of the guarantees, and they don't want to.
Oh, that's true. Yeah. I think their concern is, how do we fund? How do we, you know, if it's a per pupil amount for all districts, then some districts will be losing, right? And so it puts forward a model that would take away those, from those districts that are declining and give to those that are increasing. And that's a really tough conversation that I don't believe that they have a full understanding of or the impact of just yet. So they're pretty tight-lipped at this point.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any public participation?
We do. We have one public participation that- We have one public participation that came in. William, I believe it's Alonso, Also?
Alonso.
Alonso, I'm so sorry, forgive me. I mistook your, and for you, forgive me for that. If you wouldn't mind, we would ask that you would take the podium. He submitted a form to talk about the lack of busing for Oak Creek under a mile. Per our public participation policy, I just want to remind you that you have five minutes to speak, and we would ask that before you speak, that you please state your name and your address for the record.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I didn't have a, any kind of speech prepared, I didn't realize I was gonna be talking, I filled out the form, because it was something I did want to learn a little bit more about. But, my name is William Alonso, I live at 7252 Summerfield Drive here in Lewis Center. Have three children, two of which next year will be going to the Glen Oak Elementary, one in second grade and one as a kindergartner. So, wanted to have the discussion, and we also have a couple other Summerfield parents here. Our concern is really around the safety that has to do with having kindergarteners and first and second graders walking. From where we live on Summerfield, it's just about a mile or so on a path that is an extremely safe path, especially in the winter with snow, it's not a path that gets cleared. I have a lot of concern about sending a kindergartner down that path, and I know, you know, we've already been in discussions with parents about, you know, carpooling and that sort of thing. So we understand that is a potential remedy, but overall, you know, that's not something that can be done on a daily basis. And I'm extremely concerned about the safety issues with, you know, having the kindergartners and second graders walk. And I know we have some people that want to say some things, so I just wanted to put that on record and really just get an idea what type of options we will have moving forward to re-implement the opportunity to have busing in the neighborhood.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Sri Rajakonda, and I live at 7395 Summerfield Drive. And yeah, my issue is again the same, that my kid is actually in the second grade right now, and will be going into the third grade next year. Again, taking the bus facility off would actually be a trouble, kind of a trouble for us to drop her daily, even though we'd be pooling or anything, but we still like to have the facility continued as it is being done right now.
My name is Matt Baxendale, I live at 7371 Summerfield Drive, and I have two children who would have been riding the bus next year attending Glen Oak Elementary. I live two houses down from Sri, and our houses are literally, if you Google Map it, one mile on the nose, .95 through the field that Will talked about here. And we wanted to get some more information as to why this was implemented now. The letter we received specified that this was pursuant to a 2006 board rule that gave the mile board policy, which obviously we all know is better than the statewide rule, but that's why we moved to Olentangie, is because it's better than statewide schools. Our elementary school where we live has one bus that comes through, it serves, you know, anywhere between 25 to 40 kids. And, you know, we had instances like last Wednesday where the high was 26 degrees and they would have been expected to walk through school, through a field that doesn't get clean on sidewalks that are icy, again, they're kindergartners. So I guess I wanted to know first, why did the board change our busing policy now on a 13-year-old rule? Was the first question we had.
I, I voted on that policy, I think I'm the only one here.
Yeah.
And so, I can talk about the history of the policy, was implemented in 2006 as a cost avoidance, not a cost cutting measure, because we realized, I'm in the villages of Oak Creek, five houses down from Orange Road, so I'm, my kids go to Oak Creek, my neighborhood goes to Oak Creek. And so in 2006, when we voted on it, my neighborhood went from a bus to a walk. And so, as neighborhoods were built out, they were supposed to be, the thought was, we turn those into walk neighborhoods, as long as they fulfill the policy, and that's for any of the schools. And so, it wasn't a cost-cutting measure, it was a cost avoidance measure. And as far as I can tell, of all of our elementary schools, I counted maybe only four have walks, and that's just because of the location. But all the other, the other 11 have neighborhoods around that, that have walkers. Is that right? Okay, because I was counting. So that's the history. It happened in 2006, and as new neighborhoods come on, and they're built out, and they have sidewalks like North Farms, which is over in the Shanahan area, as that was completed, that went from busing to walking as a cost avoidance issue.
So our neighborhood's been built out for a good 20 years, though. That's why I bring that up.
Right, and so, so that's the history, but I, I don't know why it wasn't picked up in the beginning. So, I guess it's good, you've had busing, and you shouldn't have, or my neighborhood got busing taken away, you guys got to keep it, so.
Well, again, that's kind of why, why now? What is the spur that's led to this year of all years being why our buses have been removed? I honestly couldn't help but notice the $125,000 for bus routing software that tracks kids with GPS devices, which is super-duper cool, except now we have kids that are walking, and I feel like that's much more of a safety concern with GPS device tracking, if you would. You know, we're talking about the smallest of our kids, we're talking kindergartners that are walking down streets that have cars parking on the streets. They're the ones who are now not being, have the option for one bus. That, again, we've paid our levies, our taxes, all this, and now all of a sudden, it's being taken away? And the other question I had is, is how many students across the entire school district, the entire Olentangie schools we have that are walkers, before this change was made and after? What is the difference? Do we have numbers on that?
I don't know the specific numbers myself, but I will say, I defer that to administration to answer that question. I will say, you weren't the only neighborhood affected, I know Allen Creek was affected, others were affected. It was a district-wide review, so I don't want.
I don't believe we're being singled out here.
I don't want people to think you're being singled out.
No, I don't believe that at all. I mean, we put that on the record.
It was a review that had taken place to address this issue, and, you know, I'd recommend maybe an offline conversation with Mr. Ray for more of the specific numbers.
Okay, well, again, that brings up sort of a point of, if we have 1,000 students, just as that fake number, that are walking, and now we have 2,000.
Excuse me for interrupting, but we have gone over the five minutes.
Oh, sorry.
For the public participation, if you would like to extend that, Mr. Ryan may, but.
We just conclude, so, we'll get you the numbers, but it, the magnitude isn't 1,000 to 2,000. It's probably much smaller.
Well, I just want to ask you this, because then, you know, if, let's say it's 500 to 1,000, or, I'm just coming up with a rough number, I mean, if we're adding, you said four different places, that is, was that correct? That went from the four walking schools that we previously had a smaller number, or whatever it was?
No, we have 11, we have 11 of our 15 elementaries have, are already have students that live within a mile that are walking.
So we're now up to four more that we added?
No, no, we had this, this, you're, Glen Oak already has walking zones. 11 of our 15 elementaries. Sider Ridge, Indian Springs, Cheshire Elementary, and I lost the last one, what's the fourth one that, that doesn't?
Don't have any walkers.
Where?
Tyler Run does.
Tyler Run's walking.
Say it, was it, did you say?
Freedom Trail.
Freedom Trail, Freedom Trail has walkers.
Freedom Trail walks.
Do they?
I had it written down.
So, so the majority of our, of our elementaries, 11 of our 15 elementaries already have zone, walking zones. The policy was reviewed, we found, we had neighborhoods that never came offline, either when they should have come offline, because of construction, whether or not there were safe paths, all those kind of things. We actually sent, we actually started the process with Summerfield a year ago and pulled back from it, to further study it. And we've done that throughout the time as we've gone to implement these things. So, out of fairness for the people that are already subject to the walking policy, which are thousands of students who are walking, it is appropriate to enforce the policy where necessary, in areas that we have found. We've asked our transportation director to do a review of all the routing. I would offer that this is something we should talk about. I'd be happy to sit down with you, anybody you'd like from your, from your group, the three of you, if you want to represent, that'd be fine. Mrs. Carter Evans, our operations team, that's the place for this discussion to occur, not public participation. But, that's for you to say.
May I add one thing, then? If we're increasing our walkers by, let's say, 30% or whatever that number is, doesn't that make us 30% more likely to have more snow days because of the number of kids we'd have on the streets, walking? What's the economic impact of us canceling two or three more days of school year?
He makes that call, my, my initial answer would be no.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, it's, is that worth one bus, or two buses, or three buses more? I mean, that's something I think that needs to be considered.
I'd be more than, again, I'd be more than happy to take all your considerations, I've read your social media posts, I'd be more than happy to educate you about how our schools are funded and the deal you're getting with or without busing, based on the property taxes you're paying and the number of children you have. So I'd be more than happy to educate you about all that. You can live in a great district still, and will, in the future.
All right, we're done, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Ms. Haffield, please present your Treasurers' Action Items.
Yes, please, I would like to present Treasurer Action Items A through C for approval, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, any comments, don't? Please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray, please present your Superintendent Action Items.
Yes, sir, I'll present Superintendent Action Items A through E for approval.
You have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, see none, Ms. Haffield, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second, please.
Second.
Discussion would be, our next meeting is February 28th, 6:30.
Here.
Here? Ms. Haffield?
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?[1791.32]